Good evening and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of Tuesday, June 25, 2019, now called to order at 7:00 PM. The meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by local programming. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight recording tonight's meeting? Hearing none. Please join us in the salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So at this time, I'd like to remind audience applicants, Town Administration and Planning Board members, to please refrain from asking questions. And we got to all matters discussed this evening without first being recognized by me. So we have an A and R for 23 Sunrise Avenue in Raymond Bonneville.
You're doing so. It's a piece of land. The piece was not going to cut off. It does not, it's zoning, but it's being marked as not a buildable lot. So it's going to be coordinated up the industry that way so we can sign off on it. We can set up our A and R.
Any questions, anybody? Pretty cut and drag. Entertaining motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the A and R plan.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I didn't see meeting minutes.
Next one.
Okay, all right. I was going to say you could kill a little time with that.
I did hear Adam call me a slacker on the last one. I do play them back.
He did say that, yes.
Do I sign these now?
Yeah, we might as well do that. 25th? Just the three yet? Yes.
Yes.
It's going to be continued, and if you want to write down your name and phone number or an email, we'll let you know when it will happen next.
For the two property properties in South Street.
He said yes.
Yes, we pay for it.
Sorry.
Oh, yes, thank you. plan, landscape plan, traffic study, documentation of availability and adequacy of water and sewer. Juana? Please introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Marla Finley from Finley Engineering. I'm here on behalf of HBD, and this is my client, Dave Troy.
There's a motion to open public hearing, please.
So moved.
Is this all right?
Second.
Audience in favor?
Aye.
So you want to talk about waivers first? That would be good, yeah.
Okay, so specifically about the waivers, we are, we have a somewhat simple redevelopment plan. We're trying to keep the scope minimized. So we have shown some landscaping, but we're asking for, we're asking for a waiver to the requirement for a separate landscape plan. We have some landscaping proposed in this area with a landscape table.
Where there is none now.
Where there is none now at all. So we're just asking for a minimum amount and hoping that we can deal with it on this plan without a separate one being created. We're also asking for a waiver to a separate lighting plan. You can speak on behalf of this if you'd like, but my understanding is that there will be some lighting, obviously, to light the deck, and that would be about the extent of...
Just for stepping in, it's not going to be lit up, it's just going to be where you're walking, things like that.
So there shouldn't be any...
There's not going to be any bright lights or anything like that, just...
No spill.
There's really no lighting there now.
There's a parking lot light, yes.
Right.
Telephone pole, that's it.
Street light. Yes, street light.
And we're not looking to add to that. We know that could become part of the discussion, but at this point, there'd just be some lights for the deck.
Yes.
And finally, we are looking to, oh, for a waiver for any further documentation on the sewer or the water sizing of the infrastructure. We don't see any reason that this will cause any significant changes to that.
Are you operating a kitchen now?
No, we have a kitchen license, but we don't really just pick and place things like that, chips and, you know, it's nothing, there's really not a kitchen.
But you, in the, what I was reading, you are planning on serving food on the deck?
Eventually, some type of prepackaged like that. It's not going to be like a full-blown kitchen, like, you know, meals and dinners and things like that, just going to be maybe prepackaged stuff, pretty much.
Right.
Sandwiches and things.
Paris had mentioned something about if you did get into something hotter food, it would be in a contained grease trap where they...
Yes.
The company comes in in the morning, delivers the bucket to, like, fry later, and then they come in later in the day and they literally take it off the premises. So nothing actually goes into the sewer system.
Not going to be a full-blown kitchen type thing, just like pre-made sandwiches, that type of thing, nothing like a restaurant type thing.
John?
You sure there isn't a grease trap there? It used to be a restaurant, it's a Crossroads.
It was a Crossroads, it was a steakhouse, it was, I don't believe there's anything...
There's nothing there, no.
They have, they have a manhole here that actually just contains a Y, so it connects the building sewer from Dave's house and from the building, so it's just a point at which the two building sewers meet, and then it heads out into the street. I did retrieve that about a year ago, actually, from the sewer department. So no record of a grease trap that I could find, either in the field or on the sewer department's records.
Is that sewer going to go, is that sewer going to go underneath the deck?
The sewer is going to be underneath the deck, yep, so it's, because that's where it exists right now, so they're going to have to be cautious when they put the coatings and things like that. So it's a, it's just a connection point, though the deck is high, so they'll have to be able to...
My only concern is down the road, if you have a problem with your sewer, you're going to dig it up, you're going to rip the deck off.
Well, it will have a manhole still, like it does now, and there's washing room underneath the deck.
It's a lot of hand digging.
If you have a broken pipe, is what I mean.
That's my only caution to you is, I mean, I particularly, I don't care if the deck over it, I'm just letting you know that's a possibility. Because that pipe is at least, is probably 40, at least 44, 45 years old. It's probably a transite pipe, was put in the 70s, I believe, that whole area.
If that has to be done, we'll do what has to be done.
And you could probably remove some decking above it and replace it if that becomes easier.
It's going to be, it should be a walk-in, it should be six feet at least under it.
Yeah, I mean, you could always bring, if you needed a grease trap at some point in time, we're supposed to connect to that...
You could come off the manhole, come around.
To that manhole and bring it out in the street.
Yep.
So, oh, in the parking lot, I'm sorry, and then to the road. So I think you have some options there. I think that's all as far as waivers that we were asking. Oh, and traffic, also a waiver to the traffic study. We don't see any, we're making minimal changes, we're, we are actually minimizing the entranceway on the property, so this is the right-of-way line, so these landscape beds actually will bring it down to a 24-foot entrance, but out here, this is all right-of-way, all this park, this pavement that's in the front of the building, we are not proposing any changes to that. And again, we don't see that the...
So you're actually cutting down the access from what it is now, right now that you drive right up by the daycare center and stuff from where they are.
Yeah, you can see it's pretty wide. This is the curving you see in the photo.
Forty, 50 feet up there.
Right. So just the part that goes into the parking area, just all the work is proposed on the site right now.
So the front door is going to stay exactly as it is now?
Yes.
And can you, just on the, can you kind of give us a better idea where you're proposing the landscaping?
Sure.
Can you back out on that a little bit? There you go.
Sure, so it's going to, the deck, kind of, the beginning of the deck will parallel the brick face over here in this vicinity, and this landscape bed will be in front of the deck and in front of all the parking over here, and then there'll be one directly opposite that kind of meets the guardrail and comes out to give a little shield, screening to that side of the parking.
So the, all of the pervious surface is going to stay in the front of the building where the door is, and okay.
Yeah, that's actually off this property, so this is, this is all town, this is all right-of-way. His property line is about one foot off of that stair.
What's going to happen to the stairs on the side of the building?
They'll remain, so the architect, you can see the purple here, the architect kind of built it so that it's going to be underneath that landing. I believe it's kind of cut out right there, and then where you have the headroom, it'll turn back in.
Kind of jobs end, eventually when the people upstairs move out, they're just going to not rent it out again, so probably get rid of the stairs eventually, so.
Oh, there it is. So it's really going to begin about where those poles are coming down with that top landing is jogging to the building now.
Right, yeah, I probably was thinking it was on the brick a little bit more. Right, so if you can see that a little bit better. There's the landing to the stair, and there's the edge of the deck, kind of right, right underneath it. The purple is the deck, that little rectangle is the stair landing is located in the field, and the proposed edge is not far from it, headed towards the street.
What is the lighting requirement there?
Lighting requirement? I'm not specifically sure if, yeah, but we need, it's with review at the peer reviewer, and I haven't had comment from the real yet, so not...
Yeah, so basically, we're really just having a discussion this evening because the peer review hasn't been completed yet, so, you know, okay. We'll have to figure it out before the waivers.
So the way that staircase or fire escape is really what it is, is going to be, have a separate entrance than the deck. You're not going to be able to go on the deck and walk the stairs, right?
No, no, not at all.
And is the only egress from the deck, I know there's stairs off of the deck into the driveway, but is that going to be for emergency use only, or?
Yeah, they'll have a lock on it, and it's sounding like a, we're going to put a fence around it, like a, your fence that goes around a pool, black, you're fencing, there'll be an emergency egress here if you have to get up real quick.
Okay, so you're typically going through, in and out through the building, the inside door that you're putting in?
Exactly, yes.
Okay.
You'll have to come in the building, yes.
Yeah, it wouldn't be good to be coming right down out into the parking lot, for sure. And you say typically there's two employees?
At least, yes. And I'm on the premises all the time, seven days a week, 24/7, pretty much.
And I am not seeing any, oh, there you go, there was the handicap parking, it's going to be right...
Yeah, that's the only one really right at the building, inaccessible for the access aisle of the center. We need a two with a number.
Anybody have any questions? There'll be no outdoor music?
No. Live music, or there's going to be speakers, I thought?
No.
Maybe a keynote TV, maybe a little TV for sports, something, not going to be, definitely don't want that.
And the deck is going to close at 10:00 PM every night?
Yes, absolutely.
Because on the soundboard and everything.
So lights will be fixed, lights, or not string lights, or?
Minimal stepping, maybe lights off the railing type thing, so you can see where you're walking, things like that, maybe over the, with the door, the entrance is going to be, should be a little step there, so, minimal, it'll be minimal, whatever.
Okay.
Not going to be, you know...
Fixed to the decking, not fixed to a pole, or?
No, not as far as...
He's talking about embedded into the decking, into the stairs. So the light on the riser of the stair, so lights that walk in, and sometimes on the edge of the deck, they'll set them inside the deck itself or on the rail.
Right, exactly, yes.
Just want a clarification.
Whatever, minimal.
Then there's light caps as well, for the fresh sun off, yeah.
Those sum it up.
Right, just enough to ambient. I'm not seeing the detail on the gate on the stairs, where is that one?
Are you guaranteeing?
Is the gate on the architectural plans? I don't believe it is.
Should be.
I'm not seeing it.
Egress is in the back of the building.
There's somebody one on sheet 8-3, it's at the bottom left of the page.
There we go.
You should have drawn a detail of the, looking straight on, not just from the side.
Tables and umbrellas and things like that?
Excuse me?
Tables and umbrellas?
Yeah, we haven't really, he put a permit tables in, I'm not going to do that, be something...
Sure, you want something even lower.
Yeah, so we can take it in the winter time also, if you want.
Yeah, so you can clear the techies here.
Yeah. All right, and so, you know, we'll just do the, open the hearing for the site plan approval under section 9.4.1 of the Auburn zoning bylaws for the extension of non-conforming use. Proposed deck on property located 125 Oxford Street North, Auburn Mass., map 10 parcel 82. Motion open.
Make a motion open.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the narrative said something about non-conforming use, what, 12.9 feet versus 20 feet, or?
Yes.
ZBA granted that already.
That was, ZBA granted that.
Okay.
They granted special permit, they granted a variance for that. So as I mentioned, this building here is only about one feet from the street line. The setback in this zone is 20 feet, so they're, they're well into it already. The ZBA granted a variance, so we could go 12.9 feet from the property line to that front corner. So that, that has been approved, as well as a special permit for the extension of the existing non-conforming use.
Okay.
The other approvals that we're going to be seeking are Conservation Commission, and that I believe is in the works. Art Allen from Echo Tech is going to spearhead that part of things.
Is that a Zone 3 aquifer, is that what it?
Yes, so this heavy black line right here is the line approximated from the mapping that's on your website. This is a Zone 3 over here, this is a Zone 2 in this area. The construction of the deck is all in the Zone 3 according to the mapping. In relation to the deck, obviously, we do need to do some upgrading as far as striping and putting in some sort of formalization of some drainage that actually is, it's a drainage path that's already there. But let me just kind of back up for a minute. So we've already talked a little bit about the landscape beds, minimize the entryway. We have 35 parking spaces, including, including two handicapped. Dumpster area back here with a fence around it as per your regulations, snow storage in this back corner on the pavement. So right now, we've got, we've got a paved area, there's a blue line here, if you can see that. This is all asphalt pavement, and from here back, there's a crushed asphalt regrind that's been laid down that you can probably speak to a little bit better, but you were told that that can have sealed comb right over without anything else.
It can be sealed, like a regular parking lot, can be sealed and striped and everything. It's not going to, it doesn't move. I've been plumbing for four or five years now, and it doesn't, doesn't move, so it's pretty, it's like pavement, it's just like pavement. They put that under the pavement before they put the finish coat, like in your driveway, they do a rough pavement, then they do the finish coat so it's nice and smooth, but that's what that is.
So that's, that's what exists from here back right now. Our plan, according to what we discussed at the meeting, about six months ago now, with all the town representatives, was to make sure that we had a sealed surface so we could define the parking, also eliminate any, any areas where potentially salts and things from the cars, oil, any leaks from the cars would get into, would get into the ground without having some sort of treatment. So that's the plan, is to seal the asphalt and the regrind that's there, stripe the parking, the parking spots for clarification, fence around the dumpster area as I mentioned. And right now, what's happening right around the, right around here, kind of right around between parking spaces 28 and 29, there's a, according to all our spot shots and what I see in the field, there's a low point right there. So right now, everything is kind of draining in that direction. We're not proposing any paint, any changes to the topography on the pavement, only, only for drainage purposes in this area where you see the pink. So right now, there's, you have to kind of push the grass aside to see it, but at some point, somebody, I believe it was New England Power, right?
New England Power, yeah.
Put, or kind of a riprap, it's a line of riprap that goes right from that between 28 and 29 labeled parking spots to the top of the, to the top of the slope, right where I'm proposing this riprap wear. So in order to catch this and give it a little bit of treatment, slow it down slightly, I'm proposing a trench here so that the water flows down, gets kind of detained slightly in the trench. It's not, it's a redevelopment, so we're not asking for full stormwater, we're just trying to make things better. I placed a small sump here, it's about three feet below existing ground at its, at its deepest point, so just a little low spot, a low point that can just catch some water, give, give it a chance to work, maybe take a little bit of the sediment out of what's already coming off the parking lot to date. And then kind of slowly let it go, and a little wear here, will have a little burn built up, so just to keep it in there for a short period of time. And then just reestablish what's already there with a wider riprap splash pad that kind of spreads it out, diffuses the water rather than sending it in one, one stream right down the slope as it's being projected right now. So that's the drainage plan, it's minimal. The soils, as shown on the USGS map, are C soils, D soils, something called a BD soil, so not expecting a lot of recharge to happen naturally out in this area, so it looks like it's going to be quite limited. The new opportunities for it, though, will be in those landscape beds, and Dave and Paris have also agreed that it would be good to rip up the pavement under the proposed deck and place some gravel in there, so what is, what is now completely impervious, there'll be some degree of opportunity for recharge and a little less, a little less runoff. As I mentioned, none of the topography is changing, only enough to create that swale. Right now, so what we have, we have concerns for the conservation, so this is Kettle Brook, this is the 200-foot offset to Kettle Brook, so this is all conservation jurisdiction. Another concern of theirs, the green here, is the wetland line is flagged by Echo Tech. Here's their 25-foot no, no-touch offset, I'm proposing silt fence and hay bales to protect that during construction. Here's their 100-foot offset to the wetland flag, so obviously, all of that is their jurisdiction as well. Again, the deck construction's happening outside, but the pertinent work that needs to be done to just upgrade and beautify and organize the parking area is happening within it. Snow storage, that, I extended that trench so that the snow storage should drain right into it, and where, you know, kind of, again, be, once it melts, head towards that sump, give it a chance to pull some of the salts and sands out of it before it goes on its way towards the brook. Over here, we have an existing curb line, and it's in need of some repair, it's broken up a little bit over the years, so proposing to reestablish that to about a point between parking spots labeled 22 and 23. So anything, anything that comes in here will be caught by the curb and then directed into that swale as well. So the swale will treat what is now untreated and give a little bit more structure to that kind of existing little drainage path that's already there. Minimal landscaping, yet a few, couple trees and some hedge lines in those landscape beds, just to give it a little aesthetic symmetry and a little appeal and some screening for the parking. I think I might have it all. Do you have any questions? I think I might have it all. Do you have any questions?
No, just not. No, you got your variance and, you know, there's definitely a lot of, a lot of Concom stuff you guys have to do.
Yep.
I mean, really, nothing in the deck at the end of the day, as far as we're concerned, the planning side.
Yeah, yeah.
I just have one question. On the right-hand side, past the curb line, you said you're bringing the curb down, yeah, from there over, it's, it's open, correct?
Mm-hmm.
What's going to keep people from pulling into that space and going over the edge? Is there a guardrail there, going to be a guardrail there?
There's a guardrail, yes.
There's a guard, yeah, there's a guardrail right to about that space, it's actually-
The water coming, probably, like ten, fifteen years ago.
Yeah, there's a, the guardrail ends about space twenty-one to twenty-two.
And it runs all the way to the back?
No, it does not, it ends, it starts at the street and it ends right about the space twenty-one to twenty-two.
Okay, so from-
This is a pretty flat area, we're going to actually go in and come back up with a berm on the other side of the swale.
Right, but you're going to be clearing all that vegetation right there beyond the guardrail.
It's gone, yeah, New England Power came in and did that.
They drive by twice a day, they already notice.
I know.
Took it down.
So, once-
Didn't they hear it?
Yeah, but see, when you come off the parking lot, I understand the whole point about the swale and the drainage and all that, there's nothing to stop somebody who's driving right in to the swale. Because you have parking spaces, head in that whole length after the guardrail, all the way down to the corner. So, either some wheel stops or something, I would suggest putting in there, because someone will drive into that, I guarantee you.
Some concrete wheel stops.
Wheel stops are a good idea.
You can put a curb, but they don't do it now, but-
Well, the curb will change the drainage a little bit.
Curb is-
Well, the wheel stops, they'll leave the open between the spaces to let the water go.
Concrete, yeah.
Yeah.
They'll get to the swale point, yeah.
Either that or a guardrail, I don't know what the whole thing is.
Because we don't have feedback from DCG yet.
Oh, they came before DCG, they gave all their comments, six months ago, of course, all you came DCG. Main thing I'm waiting for right now is peer review, mainly for the, on the drainage, not so much that, that I put the drainage on, that reviewed. Police didn't have a comment, I think I put that in packets.
Yeah, put that on.
I'm going to double check with Porta Health, make sure they don't have any issues, but I don't think anybody, if I recall, around DCG had any real issues.
No, no, we're addressing everything, you know, Del Coyle had mentioned he wanted to have that sealed pavement to protect, so there's not a recharging of oils and gases and things. And have a little spot for them to be caught here now, that didn't exist before. We talked about recharge, but after that, looked into the soils and the fact that we are not actually increasing the impervious, so I think recharge would probably be something that we, it wouldn't do a lot of good, given the soil conditions out here, and a lot of it is, a lot of it's urban filled.
Yeah, they'll call that area Townstoneville for nothing, believe it. You should put, put gravel under the deck, did you mean crushed stone?
I think gravel.
If you made a regular, you know, like crushed gravel or something, and it rains hard enough, it's going to wash over the pavement down into your swale, but if you put the stone over it, I mean, it's cheap money, and just dress it up nice and it won't wash the-
With that loose stone, it's small, it's, I think it's three-eighths, it's very small, absorbs everything.
Three-eighths, three-quarters.
Yeah, it's small, it's kind of, it kind of binds together, it's also-
I think that's a good point, though, though, with the, having something to stop cars.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so, next steps, we've got to wait to hear from Concom-
And the peer review.
And the peer review. And so, we'd like to continue the hearing, what do you think, two weeks, so, after we decide what the summer schedule is going to be?
Yeah, we can decide the summer schedule, I'm not done now, I mean, as of right now, the only thing that will be on the next agenda will be, these people, if they get the peer review back in time and the subdivision, which I don't expect them to be ready by that, by two weeks, so they need to respond to the peer review.
One on Eaton Street?
What?
Talking about subdivision on Eaton Street?
Yeah. So, could do, we could do in two weeks, we could do it July sixteenth, which would be the third Tuesday, or the fourth Tuesday is July twenty-third.
What do you guys want to do for the summer schedule?
I don't have a problem with either one of those.
I'll say twenty-third.
I was going to say the twenty-third.
I got no.
Twenty-third.
My business partner's on the teni.
Okay, July twenty-third, July twenty-third. When do you see Concom?
Well, that all depends on when Art put that in, I'm not actually positive about that, Art Allen's doing that.
If you need to continue it, you just let Adam know.
Okay, so you definitely want the Concom to be all set before you're going to give the final?
Okay.
Absolutely.
And the peer review.
Okay, that's fine. All right.
All right, so, motion to continue, the waivers request, and also the hearing.
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Waivers.
Okay. Motion to continue to July twenty-third?
Make the motion to continue to July twenty-third.
Any further discussion? All of you favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll see you then.
Thank you very much.
So, we're going to forego the, we'll go to sixteen, we'll go to sixteen, and then same until August, do we want to do, what was the end of August, probably, makes sense?
Yeah.
And, you know, the August one, we can kind of hold with that until we see what comes up. I mean, if anything comes up-
Yeah, we'll just set July now and-
Yeah, if it starts to get busy, then we'll have to do both in August, and, you know.
Yeah.
Expecting some base site plans, but I don't know when they'll be in, but-
Okay.
These big things coming.
So, for now, we'll just stick with the, we'll have a meeting in July, and then we'll see, play it by ear, okay?
Excellent.
We're all in agreement on that?
Yep.
All right, and we have no minutes, is there any other business?
Just continue the subdivision, public hearing, it'll, like, my art.
Twenty-third, okay, so I need a motion to continue the SZLL Realty subdivision plan until July twenty-third?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye. I abstained from that vote. I recuse myself on that subject.
On the SZLL?
Yeah.
Okay. So, obtain a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.